Ready? Okay, good evening and welcome to this evening's study session of the Board of Education. Monday, February 28th, 2022. I call this meeting to order at 5:33. Ms. Janun, please take a roll.
Ms. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Bedun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat is absent. Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminski.
Here.
And Mr. Sabah.
Here.
Madam Chair before.
Thank you, Ms. Janun. Okay, topics of discussion tonight include Train. Are we waiting for them or are they virtual?
So they're gonna be here, Maya. They will be here at 6:00.
Okay, so do you wanna...
But I request that if we can go into a closed session for real estate discussion.
Yep, sounds good. Okay, will you please make the motion, Ms...
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminski.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss real estate. Support?
Support, okay. We have a motion for Ms. Kaminski, supported by Ms. Janun, that we go into closed session for the topic of real estate. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Welcome back, coming out of closed study session.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminski.
Motion to return to open session.
Support?
We have a motion for Ms. Kaminski, supported by Mr. Janun, that we come back out of closed session. Any opposed? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Kaminski.
Motion that we close.
No.
Oh, yeah, never mind.
Is Train in our study session?
Train's in study session, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's our only agenda item that we have.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Back to Ms. Allen.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Morgan if she'd like to introduce the team from Train.
I believe that all we have is Gwen Pettit from Train today.
That's it, okay.
She is Team One.
Two of one.
Yes.
Awesome.
You can come to the microphone over here.
And we also invited Mr. Scott Jacobs, Mr. Jim. I'm gonna destroy his last name. I always destroy him. Jim M.
Mezakowski.
Jim Mezakowski. Jim, you gotta help me with that. And Joe.
Gonzalez.
Joe Gonzalez. We invited these three...
That was a hard one.
We invited these three gentlemen so that they can also assist with any questions that the board may have as they've been actively involved in this process since the beginning. So Gwen, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm gonna try and fool with this for a second. I don't know if it's on.
All board members should have this presentation.
I can move it around? Okay. I gotta be able to see my, because I talk with my hands. So, hi, I'm Gwen Pettit. I'm with Train. You've probably seen, I know you've seen the boards outside your schools for the project that we're doing. I know when, see, this is bad. I'm a teacher, so I move. My past life is teaching. All right, let's do that. If I break out into song, you'll be in trouble.
Don't drop the mic.
Yeah. Let's hit the end of the presentation, when I drop the mic. So many of you, I know we have some newer board members that I haven't had the pleasure to meet through the process when we developed the project. So again, I'm Gwen Pettit. I do have a team typically. A lot of them are on vacation this week. It's a vacation week, so I got to be here by myself. So no really hard questions.
I'm sorry, real quick, before we start, since we do have some new board members, would you let them know how this all evolved?
Yep.
How you came about to this district, how you were introduced and such?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Thank you.
And what my plans today was, after talking with the team here, was to reteach in a faster fashion or manner the way this project is set. So before we even get into what we're doing in your district, I need you guys, I'm gonna introduce this to you guys as well of how these projects work. So just a new learning session, that way, for some of you that may have forgot. We'll see. So this is, you know, the snazzy title, "The Key to Crestwood's Reallocation of Utility Dollars." So today, obviously, this is our introduction, you know, why, how do we do these projects? You know, how are they successful? The benefits, the traditional versus what we're doing, the guaranteed project, our progress that we've made in your district, as well as your project update. So we'll go through those things. Some questions, of course. So what does it mean to have an energy savings performance contracting, so E S P C? And what that is, is a, it's, we're basically a financial mechanism that is used to pay for today's facility upgrades with tomorrow's energy savings without tapping into your capital budget. So when we first did this project, I feel like I'm loud. When we first did this project, you know, we develop it with no out-of-pocket expenses. Okay, you guys were just coming off the voted school bond, and I know there were some issues there. And I hope, you know, at the end of my presentation, that these guys over here that have been dealing with us can give us, you know, a little bit of praise. I'm begging for it right now, but... At the bottom of this slide here, this Michigan Legislature, at the bottom here, it's in your presentation as well, that is the governing legislature that allows us to do these projects with the school districts. So for us to be able to do this project, you have to be an ESCO, E S C O, Energy Savings, Energy Services Company. So we have a nationwide certification that allows us, because we have financial backing, to be able to borrow money, help you borrow money, and guarantee, so that's the key word I'll keep saying, guarantee this project. So, and we'll get a little bit more into that in the next slide. So as we developed this project, when we first came in to the district and we introduced, okay, hey, we're gonna build a project around the savings we can find, either operational or energy, okay? So those are the two key terms. How do we do this project and pay for the upgrades that you've been getting? By saving you energy and saving you operational spending. So, and we'll get a little bit more into that. What does that mean? But when we first developed the project, these are the things that we look for. So we start saying, okay, you know, how is the staff using the buildings? What are they doing? What is the operational waste that they're doing? Well, how can we, how can we educate them to help save money? We look for water conservation, low-flow devices. So for instance, you've probably noticed, we've put some low-flow devices throughout a lot of your schools, toilets, urinals, things like that, and we'll get into how many later in the slides.
Okay, going back to that, I had some questions about that. I know that there were issues with the flow. I know Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Mezakowski, Mr. Jacobs, there were some things that had happened, I think, at this building, right, with the elevator because of the flow, because I read in a few other reports. How was that handled and who ended up having to pay for the...
So we made those changes. Yep, we made those changes to save energy. Because, you know, that's what the project's about. So what we ended up doing is changing back. Because your piping is so old in this building, there were some issues with things being flushed on the toilet and things like that that kept blocking the system. So we had to make a different change and take out those energy savings. Because sometimes, majority of the time, it's fine, we save money. And sometimes when, when we uncover things like that, we have to say, okay, what's, what's gonna come first, operational or the energy? Well, obviously, that wasn't operating right. So we, you know, that's a reason because of the old plumbing that you have in the school.
So did it end up saving us anything when we had to go back?
No, you're not gonna see, just from the, it was a very small piece. So it's not, it's not a huge piece for that, that... Scott, and I can't remember...
We went from, you guys put in 1.2?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, come on up to the podium, please, feel free. Jim, Joe, if you guys would like to join Scott, if you have anything else you wanna add to, please, join us at the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. At Riverside, we had an issue about flow on some of the bathrooms. The train had gone through and did the water conservation. They put in, what, 1.2 gallon flush?
Yeah.
And we talked to them in regards to our issues here at the building. They increased it to 1.6. It's still an energy savings. However, it added a little bit more flow and we haven't had an issue since then, so... And it was, what, four, six flush fouls out of the whole district that we, we ended up changing a little bit higher.
What was the elevator issue that leaked in there?
The water had gone all the way through to the elevator components.
And so who ended up having to fix and pay for all that?
As of right now, it's under operations.
Under operations, but whose fault was it? Was it Train's fault?
No.
Was it Train's fault? Okay. Any questions from the board so far?
So I had read, when you said about the going to 1.6, that's not what was in... I thought we went back up to like a 3 something. It was in, I have to find it, but I... So did we change the toilets or just put the...
At 1.6, it's how much water?
Right, so we just changed the...
The head, yeah.
Okay, so we, so when we did the whole thing, like with the flanges and stuff, what did that have to do with the toilets then?
That was, well, when they started removing toilets, how many flanges?
So we changed toilets or we didn't change? I'm confused. That's what, I think that's what's...
The question is, did we change toilets? And if we did change toilets, did that impact our change of the flanges or vice versa?
Because I thought, you're saying we only changed the unit, the, God, what's it called?
New toilets are designed to move the water through a lot quicker.
So we did change some toilets and other toilets we didn't change.
Yes, some, yes, it was in the cabinet.
So how did we determine which ones needed to be changed?
So as we pull those toilets off, and again, it goes back to the old fittings and the old pipes, as we pull those off, they crumble. So it's the under, it's the undermount of those. So we fix those. We just put different flanges on and things like that. So we rectify that problem.
So can I just ask? And I wasn't gonna ask any questions, but then Ms. Berry started asking questions. So would you rather finish and then...
Yeah.
Okay.
That's later.
Sorry, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I won't be questioning.
No, no, that's fine.
It's all, everything. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that the way the project is developed and understands that this is a, this is a guaranteed project. So we'll get to that. We'll get to the project.
Okay.
So some of the other things that we evaluated, but you may not have, is kind of what I'm showing you here. We looked at renewable storage. We looked at solar. We looked at, you know, different avenues. When we look at the buildings, we take a holistic view. Obviously, heating and air conditioning, modernization, building envelopes, so we, you know, we diode doors. We've evaluated insulation, caulked roof lines, you know, we go through all that stuff. We have different engineering teams that does each piece of this, is a different engineering team that specializes in that. Energy management system, which you had existing from your bottom work. We know there was a lot of, a lot of issues from that bottom work, and so we've been working on that. Fuel conversion, are you even on the right rate? So we found, here, I think you were fine on the rate. Other solicitors we typically find, like Florenzy, I'm working with D T E right now, they, they were on the wrong rate and we're saving them $40,000 a year in operational. So those are the things that we dig into. Here, you were fine on that. Communication technology, you know, what kind of, how are you communicating? Do you have backup generators, you know, for your phone system, things like that? Those are all things that we're looking at. Customized service and maintenance programs, LED lighting, obviously, you're seeing that throughout the district. So these are the general things that when we walk into a district, that we are looking for to find energy savings.
Dave, can they hear without the microphone either?
Sorry.
We have people watching.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm, the teacher in me just yells.
Although you just look like you're doing this on TV.
Maybe that's good. The teacher in me just yells. So how does this work? So this is a, this was, oh yeah, it does have a pointer. The way it works, so before we came into the district and started making the upgrades, you know, your costs, your annual budget, you can see right here, sorry, before, you have wasted money in operational as well as energy. So when we build the project, you can see, some of your costs, you're obviously gonna have utility, utility costs. The money from doing the upgrades actually goes to pay off the upgrades, if that makes sense. So, you know, when you make, when you put a new roof on your house, that brings your costs down. Now they, you know, they caulk it in and they put the new roof, and now you're, you should see a decrease in your utility bills. So that's something similar. Now, on top of that, that little green portion is savings. And what does that mean? Is we build it depending on how much do you wanna see a dollar left of the savings? Or do you wanna see $30,000 like Sturgis Public Schools because they had to pay down their debt? So we build that based on what the team, your team decides. After the project is done, obviously, you're still gonna have utility bills. You're still gonna be giving money to the utility companies. But that chunk of money for savings goes back into general funds, or maybe you're gonna do building upgrades, you know, additions or things like that. So you have that money that's allocated back. Okay? So some of the benefits. So throughout this project, this has been a collaborative process. I mean, we worked with the team, we had study sessions, we, we went through what's the needs and the wants. You know, what can we fit in? Because we can only build these projects as much, as big as the savings we can find. So it's not like your plan and spec or your voted school bond that we, that you did, where they just say, okay, it's gonna cost you all, you know, $5 billion to do this project. We can only build the project for as much as the savings we can find. So it's different. No out-of-pocket money required. You choose, like right now, we've been, we always see, districts tend to say, okay, well, we wanna put air conditioning. Well, when you put air conditioning in, that doesn't save money. It actually increases. Sometimes they'll, they'll put back on us, hey, we wanna, we wanna put air conditioning in this building, so build that into your project, and they'll contribute. So minimal risk. So this is where the caveat is, the guaranteed energy savings piece of it. For that legislation that I showed you tells, tells you as a district and your community that we had guaranteed this project. So I'll show you later on, I can't remember off the top of my head, but the savings that we guaranteed in this project, if we don't meet that savings, we have to pay you the difference. So that's the big caveat of the difference between a voted school bond and a guaranteed energy project. Okay? Single-source accountability. As these guys can contest, when there's an issue, we fix it. You come straight to me. You come straight to my project manager. We work with the team here as well, and it's always, I mean, we, we, in, in every project, there's something gonna come up, and we just work through it, and we get it fixed, and we're good to go. Warranty, also, that comes through me too. So I'm your point of contact along with my project manager, Norm, of which I don't know if you, you have seen around the school, because he's always in the district. Again, you're addressing utility waste spending for the long term. We're doing sustainable stuff that's gonna, that's gonna last for the long term. Modernization of the equipment, so for instance, your heating, we're doing unit vents and things like that. And that's things that, yes, it'll save you money if you just did it, but we're gonna make sure it's more than code-driven. And what does that mean? When you do, when you just rip and replace in a voted school bond, it's code-driven. When you do, when you go above that and you make it energy efficient, you get all the extra savings and rebates out of that. Avoid labor and material cost escalation. So that is a huge thing, especially, I mean, I don't have to tell you the cost of bread right now. So we had, what we said in the beginning, you know, the, the project size and things like that, when we close that contract, that's how we, we, we guarantee that. So you're getting things done today that if you waited a year, it would have been 20% to 25% more. So we, we have that, you're avoiding that material cost escalation. Obviously, the economies of scale, doing all the lighting at the same time, you get better pricing as opposed to picking off, you know, little things like that. And that goes across the board for equipment. That goes across the board for flanges, for the toilets. You get better pricing when you do everything at the same time. One of the things we'll talk about is the enhanced learning environment. So what Train does, as, and how we help you developing a STEM curriculum as well as a skilled trade program. And then, of course, Partners for Life. We've been in Michigan for over 100 years. We've been a company for over 100 years. We have four service centers in Michigan. We are here to stay, obviously. We're a big global company. Voted number one across the nation for HVAC. So we're not going anywhere. These guys know if there's a problem, or my old customers, they just call me directly. So we're not going anywhere. So let's real quick talk about, and I'm not gonna go line by line, but you can read up here, you know, here's the traditional plan and spec that you're used to with voted school bond as opposed to what we're doing here in this project. So in a voted school bond, you have to put money upfront for the engineering, to even get the project even started. What we did is we take on all the risk. So by working with the board and working with the team here, we take on all the risk, and we don't move to the next step until we know you guys are comfortable with it. And so that's what we did prior to starting the project. So we won't do any upfront engineering because we wanna make sure that everybody understands this isn't a rip and replace, and we're just coming in, we're dropping equipment, and we're, we're walking out. The time from the audit to construction, typically for a traditional voted school bond, is typically one-plus years. You usually start the summer, the summer after it's passed. In our projects, we're usually four to six months, depending on the size of the project. Number of contracts to execute, we're one. You deal with me, just like I said, you deal with me directly. These guys, I'm on every meeting, every Monday, I get on the project meetings, and I communicate with Penny and, and directly. Project costs fixed, obviously, we talked about that. Our project costs are fixed. Even though price of things went up, you know, like, let's say for lighting, lighting has went up 25% since we, since we closed this contract. But you were locked in at that 25%, or that 25% lower. Our operational outcomes are guaranteed. Again, guaranteed, that's the key word. What, what I said when we closed this contract, what we wrote in contract to guarantee, that's what we have to meet at the end. When we close this contract and we're all done with the project, we have to pay you the difference if it doesn't meet that guarantee. You don't get that from a voted school bond. That's not how they operate. So long-term, single-source accountability, we talked about that. Lowest lifecycle cost, we talked about that. As well as the project size is only as big as the savings we can find. That's very important. I can't blow it out of the water because I have to have the savings to be able to back into for the project size. So very, very important there. Any questions? It's a, it's a different way of doing projects, so it's hard to wrap your head around. This isn't plan and spec where I got a furnace that I need, you know, and I put it out to bid and I get five, five bids for furnaces.
I have a lot of questions. It's gonna slow you down, so...
That's what I say, are you done, otherwise?
No.
Okay.
Just go ahead and finish because there's a lot of questions.
Okay. Well, we can go over this now, or we can talk about it a little bit later. But the student center, so what we're doing is we're working with your teachers to build in a STEM education inside the already existing curriculum. And so we're at the beginning stages of that. And it's a certified STEM curriculum that we provide the materials, we provide the training, and we mentor them and provide them support through the whole, their whole process. So it's another layer, and it's not me. I have science teachers, retired science teachers that work with your teachers. So between the two that are working with your district, they have 70-plus years of science work-based teaching.
Who do you work with directly here in the district?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't, hmm, do you remember who the teacher is?
Oh, in the high school...
Sorry, I have 10 districts.
It was in, it was in one of the Friday updates before.
I can get that for you, but it's, it's an existing teacher already. So we will give him the data. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we created a new class. It was in one of the Friday updates at one time. It's called Energy Conservati, it was an energy course, and it counts as a science elective, and it's based on STEAM and STEM, and it's based on the Train curriculum. And it lines up directly with M D E, so it's counted as, as one of their science elective credits.
Yep. So that's something different than you'll normally see with a plan and spec. And, you know, it's, Train has put in $500 million into education, and so, and to support education. And so we know that the curriculum is an energy-based curriculum, supplemental curriculum, to, to make energy-conscious citizens. So it's all work-based, hands-on, just like STEM, you know, certified STEM. So we can go into that a little bit more if you have more questions on that. So right now, our process, so you can see where we're at. We're, we're at the mobilization stage, but typically what we do is, you know, we come and we introduce, just like I did. I know some of you were here when I, when we talked about it originally. And we did some work, work-study as well, working through, you know, what, what do we wanna include in the project? What fits in the project, and what doesn't? Then we did, just gathering the data, so analyzation. You know, we take your, in the beginning, we took your utility bills and your square footage, and we baseline that against high-efficient districts of the same size. So we have a baseline, and that's standard across the industry to do this type of work. And then, of course, we presented the preliminary study. We had some working sessions with the team here, as well as the team here. And I think some of you were involved in that, some of the people that may have retired. So working sessions, you know, picking and choosing, do you want this or do you want that? You know, this makes more sense because it brings in more energy, you know. So that's how we go about building. We are just the facilitators. We bring you the information, and you make the decisions. The detailed energy study, which is actually required for these voted school bonds by the state, we have to do that. And then, of course, we consistently are collaborating, bringing back the final scope, you know, what is the... It went out to R F P. It did go out to R F P because that is state mandated. It has to go out for two weeks. And then the board selected. So that's kinda how it works. We work with P F M, we work with Troon. We actually work with the same Troon lawyer through the whole process. And then, right now, we're in mobilization, where we're just installing and fulfilling. And some of you should have probably seen some of the upgrades that we've done. Something like toilet flanges and things like that, you know. A lot, a lot of you unfortunately aren't gonna see that work. So let's talk about your project specifically. So it was $2.5 million. We guaranteed $91, $751 a year. Our operational spending or savings is what the team has given us. We don't come up with that number. It's, it's something that, you know, what kind of things are you wasting money on? If you're fixing boilers all the time, you know, calling for service, you know, well, after we do that type of work and we upgrade, then you don't have those, those spending anymore. You know, light bulbs, third-party service, things like that. That's numbers that the team gave us. We did not come up with that number on our own. Measure and verification, that's what M and V stands for. So through the state, we have to do it for five years. Typically, we, when we show you five years in a row that, yes, we are meeting our savings, you can choose at five years to either keep going for 20 years or the length of your loan to the state, or you don't. Most, most don't, because we've proven it in five years. Why waste the money in year six, seven, and eight? But you have that option. It's open to you. And then our projected finish date is this summer, so that's our goal. Obviously, for COVID, it has been extended, trying to get materials and things like that. It was just a little bit of slow start, but we are working through it. And we are hoping to be out by the September of, by the summer of 2022, so this summer. So where are we at with your project? We have Crestwood Public Schools Project Status Review. So you can see that the red is not started, which we have started everything. I think the last time I presented, we were in the beginning stage of where we were. And that was quite a while ago. In progress right now, we have mechanical and controls validation. And then complete, we've completed all the lighting, the water, and the billing envelope. So that's been done for quite a while. So right now, we're in the construction period savings, so you'll see savings popping up just from these things that we've done. So what, next what we have here is specifically, what are we doing at every school? Okay, so the mechanical at the high school, it, that, obviously, I just showed you, that's in progress. We finished some things. We've added a dirt, air and dirt separator because we found the piping is, we needed to do that in order for it to work efficiently. We've had to include some isolation valves because you didn't have them, which we, you kind, you needed. Because of something like the flood, and you have no way of turning off a side of the building, then you have to turn off the whole building, and that tends to cancel school. So things like that. We have hot water pump frequency drives that are, we have five of those that we've installed, and, and those are finished. We just have to, the completion document has to be signed, so we're, we just finished that. Facilities Department Heating, so we had no heat in, for Peggy at the facility office and Scott, so we just had, had that done. Let's see, what else? I lost my place here. Garage, the cabinet heater, unit heater in the garage. And then we have four unit ventilators at the district, or at the high school. Lighting is 100% complete, so we converted them to LED, and we're just waiting on state inspection. So our, our waiting is, the state inspector are well, way, way behind. And that's at all the buildings. Controls and energy management system, so what we're doing at that, because you had that installed with the bond, but we found some errors in some of the programming and things like that. So we're going device, and we're, we're doing this right now, and that's with this team here behind me, where we're making sure that the points, we call it points, are... sure that the points, we call it points are landed, we're making sure they're actually connected. And so, because we found a lot of controls, um, errors that we needed to come back and fix. So, and we're just documenting that and bringing that to the team. Um, and that's in progress. Obviously, the water is 100% completed. Um, and let me, let me just say real quick, if it was already LED, or if it was already energy-efficient, we didn't touch it because why would we redo it? It's not, that doesn't save money. So, we only touched the things that were not high efficiency. So, under the water, you see, you know, we have numbers there, 25 water closets, urinals, lavatory sinks, classroom sinks, garbage disposals, um, pre-rinse sprayers, and hand sinks. Building envelope, um, the trade area and the maintenance garage. So, we put two garage doors on. Um, we put door seals on the wooden metal shop. Um, what else? The, where the roof and the wall intersects, um, we did a lot of, um, polyurethane foam there, as well as insulation, um, soffits over the windows, and things that, you know, in your house you would do too. Um, exterior door sweeps and weather stripping. So, that's all at the high school. Riverside Middle School, similar things, different quantities, but, uh, high, high, or hot water pump frequency drives, and then some uni- ventil, unit ventilators, as well as lighting. Um, again, waiting on state inspection. Um, and very similar. I mean, you can kind of see the things that we're doing there are very similar, um, to the energy efficiency things that we're doing at the other schools.
One.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
And it's not completely directed toward you, but I'm about ready to have a heart attack here. So, these problems and errors that were found based on the bond, things not connected, um, the window sills and the doors, which I personally went around and took pictures of and told OAK to get them fixed. Are we going back to OAK and making them pay for this because they said they would still be responsible?
So, I mean, I would have to talk with the team to see what was done prior to and when that was supposed to be done. Because if it's out of warranty, if it's not out of warranty, we have to keep in mind, and I mean this with all due respect to everyone, there were a lot of things that we expected from the previous bond that we found out later were not done.
Mm-hmm.
So, if these are elements that you are stating were not done by the bond, that would have to be something that I'd have to get.
I guarantee the insulation boards, the soffits, the windows and the doors, and Scott, you can, I think, attest to this.
I can remember the door conversation and the windows, but as far as the soffits, I don't remember. The only thing I remember about soffits is replacing the, uh, the substrate that they had to cover.
Right.
I don't remember anything about insulation of the soffits, but I do recall the insulation around the doors and windows.
Okay.
So, we'd have to go back and look at that?
Okay.
That is something that?
I'm sorry, I was just about here.
No, 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 Scott, if you can write that, those things down, yeah, we'll, we'll discuss it.
And I remember when we, I presented the first time, you know, there was some question.
Yeah.
And that's why, everything that we find, we bring to the table and say, okay, what do you want us to do with it?
Yeah.
Do you want to, you know, what do you, because we're documenting everything, you know, as long as we can.
And I appreciate that. I really do.
So, and, and that was part of what, when, when I presented, you know, the first five times, that was part of what our, the process was, process was going to be, is you let us know, and then we'll make the decision on, you know, was it part of the bond? And I wanted, I do, I do want to say again that we didn't touch anything that was already done.
Right.
So, if we went around and we found a door sweep at the back door and it was already done, we didn't do it.
I understand.
So, it's very well documented, when we do the closeout documents, it'll be very well documented to what we did touch, you know. So, you'll have all that, and then, you know, if you need our help from there, you just let us know.
Thanks, Gwen.
No problem.
I appreciate it, Gwen. Sorry. It's okay. But when you say your head's about to explode, I start getting scared.
No, feel free to jump out and ask any questions.
Okay. I mean, I literally just got rid of the pictures off my phone.
She's like, I gotta say it now.
It's okay. It's okay.
They're saved to the cloud. It'll be fine. And we have pictures too, you know, as well from before, because we, that's part of the process, is we take our, our own pictures. So, everything's documented. So, there's no question. Um, so, again, you know, similar things that we did at the high school, we're doing here. You can see, you know, we did an overhead door, we did some sweeps and things like that. So, it's just different counts. Um, and all these counts, um, as we went through them, you know, it could have been plus or minus, and, but it's documented also in the contract. So, the numbers, if, for some of you that were here prior, those numbers were actually in the contract and actually pictured out on a floor plan of where that was going. Nope, what did I do? I think I turned it off. Okay. So, Highview, very similar. Some of it, um, not quite as much. We did, uh, domestic hot water heater. If some of you remember, last May, when we hadn't even got a contract yet in place, and your water heater died in the middle of school. So, we had to, we, we got that all done, and, and it was a process of working as fast as we can when we weren't really yet prepared. But that went well. That's, again, working with the team and being able to collaborate and work through, you know, what needed to happen for that. Um, again, similar things, unit vents, hot water, um, pump frequency drives, um, lighting, similar things with the controls. Um, and I have to say, the controls piece and energy management, um, this team back here and, and the other building engineers that are the, you know, that deal with those buildings on a regular basis, they are intricate part of helping us find some of this stuff that is not, you know, wouldn't normally, we wouldn't know unless they're like, oh, yeah, this teacher always calls about this, and then we have to really dig into the engineering for that piece. So, thank God for these guys here. Um, and again, building envelope, very similar, similar things. And then, mechanical at Hillcrest, um, you know, pretty much all the same. You can see in the billing envelope, we didn't have to do as much there. So, because I think Hillcrest has got the newer windows. So, we didn't do as much there. Kinlock, um, a little bit more caulking of the windows, but, you know, very similar. Okay, now, now I can't wait for the questions.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Mr. Sabal.
Thank you. That was very well done. Um, I do have some questions for you.
Yep.
And, and I was here, I wasn't here for your presentation in person, if you gave one, but I was on, on, uh, Scott or Zoom, whatever, meets, I'm sorry. So, you, numerous, numerous times you stated, if we don't meet the savings, we have to pay you. Or, I'm sorry.
No, I have to pay you.
Correct. You, yeah. If you, you have to pay us.
Yes.
How's this calculated again?
So, there's different calculations for different, we call them ECM, so that list of things, they're called energy conservation measures. So, there's different calculations. You know, when you go to a LED from a T8 or T12 or T5, you know, you're gonna, all we need to do is we take a pre-measurement, and typically what we did in the, in the beginning, which is typically, um, required by the state, as well as everybody kind of does the same type of measure and verification, we take a reading. We have a, a, a device that reads, you know, what is the calculation of the light in that specific space. And so, we'll do that in like gyms, we'll do it in a classroom, we'll take a, a 10% reading, and then we'll go back after, when we walk with, with the team here, they actually walk us with, with us, and they measure and see the readings. So, we have our pre-measurement, and we'll say, okay, here's, here's, do you agree? And then, we have our post-measurement that shows what the light levels are now, and then there's a calculation. And I can get those calculations, they're actually in the contract. I don't, I didn't have them on the slide. But, um, there's a calcu- calculation, and then a rate that is agreed upon, and that's where Troon comes in and helps with that rate. And so, it's just a multiplier. And we do that with water, we do that with lighting, um, the building envelope. The, there wasn't a ton of savings based on the controls because we weren't sure what we were going to unfind, or find. So, typically in these projects, the savings is even more. We're very conservative when we build it, but the savings is usually more than what we stated. So, and you reap that benefit. So, if that makes sense, like for the controls piece, we weren't sure what we were going to really uncover because you did have a new system. And so, we didn't have a big, large number attached to that one, but whatever you save, it goes in your pocket. It's not something, there is, there is other, um, companies that'll do share saving. We don't do that.
So, up to how much? And this is annual, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yep. So, I think, uh, what was it, 90?
91,000.
91,000?
So, that's, that's the number that you need to meet every year. Otherwise, there's a cost to you.
Yep. That's the guarantee of being an ESCO.
And that's for five years?
Yep.
Right? And then, the, the warranty?
Yep.
On parts and labor is how long?
I would have to go back. It's typically, well, it depends on if, like a boiler. A boiler usually gets seven years, lighting usually get five, you know.
That's parts.
Yeah, that's the parts thing. And I can't remember off the top of my head. I think, I, I want to say it's more than one year because usually, usually it's a one year, but I, I would have to go back and look, and, and I, I apologize. I, I should have known that off the top of my head.
Mr. Jacobs, do you have the answer to that? Like, do you know what, um, the warranty years are?
I'm not based on their, on their products and their, their labor.
So, it's in the contract, and, and it depends on the, the piece of the product.
So, it's one year?
Yeah. Yeah, but not for everything. If you, if you go through, like, um, Univens has a longer, um, warranty on them. So, there's different, and, and again, I can send that to you, um, after we're done here.
That's right.
I can, I can pull that up.
I'm sorry, bear with me, I got a few questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And then, you, you said extra savings and rebates. Rebates are coming from who?
Your utility companies.
Okay.
So, we work with your account manager, whoever is responsible for the district. They help us, actually, they help us in the development as well. So, we'll say, okay, this is what the district wants, or needs, usually it's a need. This is what they need. You know, where can we find the savings, or where can we find the rebates? And they help do the pre-applications with us, and they help, they actually help us identify other stuff that maybe, you know, maybe we didn't, you know, we work as a team and we, um, didn't see that. So, they bring things to the table as well.
So, we haven't done that yet?
You got some rebates, I'm going to say for lighting maybe, that should be coming. So, we can only do it when the, when that piece of the puzzle is done. It, it has to be complete in order to file for those rebates. So, like the mechanical, we haven't done the mechanical yet because it, or we haven't done the controls. And that isn't guaranteed either, like, we don't guarantee those. But working with your account managers that actually call in the district, like, um, and what is it, consumers, consumers directly, we work directly, you know, we say, okay, this is what, this is the project. Can we find any more rebates? It comes directly to you in a bunch of different checks. Every ECM is a different check.
Sure. And then, you earlier mentioned the cost of the projects obviously increased because of material cost. And the, the cost of the total project was $2,541,213 with the cost figured in, right? Did you guys pre-purchase these materials?
Yeah, yeah. So, the only cost that, in addition, that you would have out of this project is when we find new things that we need to fix. So, one of the things for the controls piece is our job was to investigate it and then bring you back, what do you want to do with it? Because we were hoping that it was, you know, sewed up with the bond. So, we brought that, that was built in there. And so, we bring things back, and we say, okay, do you want to fix it, or you don't want to fix it? If you fix it, you know, there is things that we find that actually brings you more savings.
Yeah.
So, we, we bring that back to the table, to the team every Monday, and we say, okay, here's, here's something we found. If you do it, you're going to save this much money in energy, and you're going to get this much money in rebates, and it's going to cost you this much. And typically, it's going to give you more ease and more comfort.
It wasn't a part of that project?
Correct.
Okay. What was a part of project cost were all the doors?
Yep, all that's in there.
Uh, all the LEDs?
Yep.
Right? So, earlier you said, if the LED was fine, we didn't touch it?
Correct.
And if the doors were fine, we didn't touch them?
Correct.
Did we see a savings for that?
I don't recognize the savings. I only recognize the savings for the stuff I touch.
But you charged us for it?
No, I didn't charge you for it. I'm saying.
That was my question to you. I said, was that included in the cost?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. No, I misunderstood you. So, obviously, if I, if I came in here and your building was already done in LEDs, I wasn't going to rip them out and replace them. That's not cost of it.
No, I'm with you. I'm just saying, that 2.5 million?
Mm-hmm.
Was included for the lighting, the doors, and everything?
After the walkthrough, after they picked everything.
Yeah, after we went through and audited the whole thing.
There was initial cost when they first presented this.
Yeah.
After the walkthrough, did the walkthrough prior?
I, I know, but I'm just saying.
Okay, finish up, Mr. Sabal.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, what's, during the construction, during everything else?
Yep.
If things were noticed that didn't need to be done?
Oh, then I brought it to the table.
Okay.
If it wasn't included in the project originally, because just like if you redo your kitchen?
Sure, sure.
You take the stuff out, you take the drywall off and you find plumbing. I, we bring it to the table, to the team, and say, here's, do you want it, do you want us to fix this?
But if it was?
If it was, then we fix it. If it was part of the contract, then we fix it. So...
Yeah, I don't think we're on the same page.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, that's, all I'm saying is, if something was predetermined, that you came through your walkthrough?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you walked through, you know, five buildings.
Yeah, many times. Yeah.
So, nothing was missed, is what you're telling me? Everything that was in that walkthrough was changed?
Everything that we identified as a cost-saving measure?
Was, was?
Was changed, that we identified. Now, I'm not going to say that, you know, once we, like, when we pulled the toilet flan, when we pulled the toilets off and saw that the underneath base was crumbling.
Can't see that before, I get it.
Right. So, everything we could see. Because remember, the one thing that I'll say is we built it, um, on an energy level. We're not building it as a rip and replace. So, you know, we, we earmarked, I think we earmarked 10% typically is what we usually see fail. So, we have 10% built in there. But when we did your toilets, there was way more than we found. And that's just because of the age of the buildings. So, we brought it back to the table and said, hey, before we start ripping anything else off, do you want us to take care of this now? Because it is going to be a problem. Do you want to fix it? Because that's always an option. You can fix it. We've identified it, you can fix it. If you had somebody on staff that did that, and, you know.
Did we have any of that, where they fixed it and not you?
Um, yeah. I mean, little things, right?
No, yeah, you remember it all.
Okay.
The 10% you were discussing, what it was, uh, that was met within the first, uh, elementary school the first day. And that was district-wide for 10%, so.
I think Mr. Sabal's question was, if you labeled a door to be changed, and later on, the district had already changed it when you came in and did the changes, did that door, the cost of the door?
You get a deduct.
It did remove. I think that was his question.
Yes.
Originally. Okay.
If that's right, yes. If we went, for instance, I think there was lighting, insurance claim, right? So, before we got to the lighting, right away, you had an insurance claim on the lighting. Well, we just deducted that from the project. So, you'll see a, a, an actual deduct. We gave you a change order that says deduct. We also...
I thought I said the same thing as him.
You're making me nervous.
That, that's how I understood it. Anyway, let's move on.
Well, no, I mean, that's my question, is how much was it?
It's definitely savings.
Do you have any ideas?
Deductions.
Yeah, the deductions.
Oh, the deductions. Um, off the top of my head, there wasn't a ton.
I'm so baffled.
The what?
Exit signage.
Oh, the exit signage, yeah. Yeah, there was some, um, exit signage that, that we found. Yeah.
I'll shut up now.
Yeah, no, but you do get the, listen, we're not charging you for something that is already, that's the goal of this project, because the savings has to be there to do the rest of it. So, if, if we can't show a savings, I can't do, you know, do another upgrade.
President Berry, I'm sorry, and I'm, and I'm taking notes as you all are speaking. I'm taking some notes down on a few things that we can come back with when Penny, Scott, and I sit down and look at it as well, like the deductions, so on and so forth.
Okay. Uh, moving on to Ms. Janoon, go ahead.
I, I won't lie, I've been anxious for you guys to get here because I've had some questions. Um, first off, you don't typically go in and scope your drains out with cameras prior to deciding whether or not?
So, no. Um, only, only because when we're, when we're doing, you know, we're doing low-flow devices, right? So, yes.
That's my point.
We don't charge for engineering because we can't. So, the state of Michigan says, you cannot charge as you build this project. I cannot charge you if you're using an energy bond.
So, then, wouldn't you recommend districts scope their drains themselves then, prior to doing so? Because with buildings being as old as ours are?
Mm-hmm.
There's going to be scaling. There's going to be issues with our pipes and with our drains. Like, I know with Ford Motor Company, and I have, you know, I, my husband's a plumber, so I, I think going back and asking these questions and just really concerning me, you know, like with Ford, they decided to put the tubing, you know, so that...
Yeah, they put it inside the other one.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So, my question is, is why would we go through damaging our elevator, constantly having overflowing and issues in the, you know, within our buildings? Because you're Because you're saying you're gonna show us the cost, save, you know, the savings. But then there are things that were done that turned around and cost us additional money to fix, like snaking our drains. There's been a couple of times where we paid $1,000 on multiple occasions to snake our drains, fixing the elevator because we had a toilet overflow. And I know you said that you didn't go, you know, so I'm reading a report where it said that the capacity was recommended by a plumber to increase the flush valve capacity to 3.5, was in one of the reports. So I'm a little confused because there's conflicting information.
That was the cheapest way to do that, right now?
But you guys said we just, in the beginning, said we couldn't even do that?
Oh, well, we increased it base, so we had dropped it originally. And then we went back and had to increase the flow.
But that was my initial question earlier. And then you said you did not increase it to that much, so.
So we couldn't increase it to that much, to the, what was it, 3.?
3.25.
3.25, yeah.
There's, there's actually a law that went into place in 1994, if I'm not mistaken, and I can look it up, that says, once you replace a 3.25 flush valve, you cannot put, go back up to 3.25. So legally, by law, we couldn't do it.
We went up to 1.65. But the 1.6 wasn't sufficient and that's why we were having?
1.25 was not sufficient. Currently, we have 1.65 in there right now. And since we've replaced it over Christmas, we've not had a flood to date since it's been replaced to 1.65.
Thank you. I'm sorry, and if Scott, you want to add anything to that? Cause I know you were dealing with that directly, I was all you and Jim and.
Yeah, the.
Grab the mic, I'm sorry.
Yes, the plumbers had repeatedly told us during the blockages that we, they had assumed that there wasn't enough flow. So we engaged a conversation, Penny, myself, Norm and Gwen, we engaged a conversation. Just on bumping it up a little bit more, still maintaining some energy conservation in those areas, but allowing us more water to push it out of the building. And it's been working so far, and it was a struggle, struggle in the beginning, but we got it solved.
And so every building, every district is different, based on, some districts have better water quality. And so we could include it, it would just hike the, hike the cost of it, if we did what you're saying. So what we did is when we found it, we stopped and said, okay, you know, this is, what do you want to do at that point?
Because we were, we were having issues in overflowing in our toilets.
Yeah, for that, yeah, for that, yeah, for that when you were. And there's a, there's a recommendation that, you know, we brought to the table. How do you want to handle this?
So where does that factor into our savings? Cause now it's no longer where you thought it was going to be.
So in the, in the contract, we'll just make an adjustment. And it's gonna be very, you know, a little bit of savings. Well, so what we do is we'll write an addendum saying, okay.
You haven't done that yet, though?
Uh, not officially. We have, we have the savings, you know, back, our, we have a team of energy engineers at the corporate level that will handle that for us. So we'll just make that adjustment and it's just the same. If we took out the emergency lights or if we took out lighting, we would make that contract. You'll see it all in the contract.
Can we see a running list of items that are going to be adjusted?
I, I have it in my notes to start putting that together for you.
And then, to date, what has trained been paid?
We progress bill and typically it's not even every month.
Well, okay, so is it different than what, cause if I go through and calculate the checks that have gone out, it's over $2 million.
So there's a, I believe, either 25% or 30% mobilization fee upfront that allows us to buy everything upfront, which we did. So you always have that in these projects?
Okay, but I'm saying that's more than 25%. That's $2 million.
And then we progress bill from then on. So there's a progress schedule inside the contract that although, I'm, sorry?
How often, I'm sorry, what is?
Um, you know, the contract says every month. We typically don't do it every month and it's usually, it depends on, like, right now, we're a couple of weeks. We have a little, like, a week where we're working on the control stuff. And so we might not do as much that month. And so, but next, or this week, but next week, we're doing a lot. So it just depends. It's all progress billed. And he itemizes, itemizes that on the billing. So in the contract, it says every month.
Well, it wasn't, it hasn't been every month. So the first one was July 30th, August 27th, December 3rd, January 28th of this year.
So it's progress billed? That's, that's, I mean, it's not like your standard, like, if you have a house loan.
Okay, so when you said there's no upfront cost, that's what I was confused about. We have.
To do all the engineering upfront. So before you sign that contract, before we went through the whole process and we got to the contract?
That's what you meant, okay.
That's what I meant there.
Okay, I think it was a little misleading. We have, we have paid out over $2 million.
Yes. So typically in a voted school bond, before you even start the project, when you hire an engineer or architect, you have to pay them money if you hire a consultant. You're paying all that upfront. What we do in these projects, we take on the risk. And the only way we do that is the steps that we followed with you to develop the project. I gotta make sure that you guys understand it, that your board has understood the process. And then we had some new board members.
And I just want, and I just wanted to clarify that, just because, again, if somebody just hears you say that there's no upfront cost and we haven't, so I just wanted to clarify that. But, so right now, we only owe another $500,000 or so left to you guys?
Uh, if that's the, I don't know.
I'll, I'll.
I don't have the finances in front of me, sorry.
We'll get that description out and share it with the entire board so that there's clear understanding. I don't want to make assumptions.
That, that's fine, that's fine.
One more question?
No, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Baydun?
So, just a couple of questions here. I see on your, I think it was slide five or six, but your financial slide, project size 2.5 and some change? All right, guaranteed energy savings of 91,000, operational savings 32,000. And then it says M&amp;B five years. And then the project finish date, just so I understand, the summer of this year?
Yes.
Right. What does that entail when we say project finish date?
So that means when you've decided we have finished our job and you sign off on the final, we have different steps that Scott and Penny have been signing off. Like, when we finished lighting, we did project completion document. And after we did the walk, after we evaluated, so when you decide that that is, you know, that we are done, then you will sign off on it. So right now with, with COVID and everything, it's kinda, the project has extended in timeline, obviously.
So does that also consist of the annual savings that you're showing too? Is that year-over-year?
So you're gonna get, so that's the first year savings. We build in, you'll get 3% on top of every year. So that's, if you look, and I can supply the contract again. You can see in the contract, there's a performa of year-over-year of what you should expect.
Excellent. And so basically, what is the usual return on investment for a district our size and roughly a project size of 2.5 million?
So we built this, we backed into that number. Now, remember, we had to find the savings. So we backed into that number for 20 years, we did the loan for 20 years. And that was just based on what you wanted out of the project. I mean, if you decided, you know, forget about the mechanical, you know, we're gonna do that on our own, then we, it would have been less, less time. But those big pieces of mechanical is what, what builds the project bigger.
So usually a project of this size, the ROI is 20 years? Is that what you're saying?
It all depends, it all depends on the scope of work that we're doing. Because you had large equipment that you were, it, you know, we extended to fit as, like, we couldn't, in this project, we couldn't get one more Univent in it. We could only do so many Univents. So you, you get what I'm saying?
But is it roughly 20 years?
Yeah, this one is 20 years.
Okay, so in 20 years, and there's, how long are we in? I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the time you started.
That's okay.
How long have we been? Five years?
Uh, no, 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 we're not even done with the project. We're in year one.
Right, so, so year one, you get the 2.5 million total, once the project is complete.
Yep.
And then for 20 years, we'll receive a 3% on top of the ROI.
Of this number, compounding.
Roughly compounding for the remainder of the life of the district.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. If you go ahead and decide to add, I think one of the things we looked at was Jim, was it the air conditioning in the auditorium or something? If you go forward with that, obviously, we're gonna have to make adjustments to the contract. So there's, and that's just the communication, that we stay in the loop. Obviously, if you came back to us and said, we're not saving money. And I said, well, you just put air conditioning in the, in the auditorium, we have to adjust for that in the contract.
Yep, I understand. Thank you, that was my question.
Yes.
So, just a couple. Uh, when he was asking about completions, is that an incremental sign-off? Or is that a final sign-off on everything?
So we've been doing incremental. So as we finish something, the project manager will walk it with the team. And he, they don't sign it until we finished every last thing if we find, cause you always find something. And so we don't, they don't sign it until we have completely, they're satisfied. And at the end, so right now, I think we have sign-offs on garage doors. We have sign-offs on lighting, building envelope. You know, there's certain things that we have final, they're called final completion. And so we have certain things, but like the mechanical and the controls, we don't have that. You know, because we're not done with it.
Okay, and my next question, the 10% oops factor that was factored in? I know, like Scott said, it was, you know, blown in the first, first.
First hallway.
Um, so how much more of the oops has been paid out, or for the oops, I guess? And do we have, like, do we have like a separate tally of this was not accounted for and this is what we had to pay out for each item?
Yes. We give you a change order. And we, you know, like I said, when we find it, we bring it back to the team and say, hey, it's gonna cost you $3,000 roughly to fix these things. I forget exactly the dollar amount. It's gonna cost you $3,000. Do you want to fix them or do you want us to fix them? Do you want us to stop? What do you want to do?
Do we know how much we've gone over?
We've only had the one change order.
For 3,000?
Yeah.
That was the phalanges.
That was the phalanges that we brought to the board.
So that's the one that took us over our 10%?
Yeah, yeah, that was just the actual base of the equipment. When we took it off, it was just crumbling. And so immediately before, before we moved any farther, we came back to the team and said, this is, this is what we're finding, how do you want to handle it?
So we're still within our scope for everything else that was quoted?
At this time, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, that's just been the one change order. You'll see a deduct, like I said, we, and, and maybe you can share with them one of our project reports. Or it's fully detailed, every Monday, these guys can attest the problems, what we fixed from the week before, you know, what's coming up. Like, it's a full detail, I think it's several pages long, that we provide to the team every single week of where we're at of the project. You know, do we, are returning, it's down to, do we need to turn back in keys to, you know, like, we sign off on that. We make sure that we don't walk away with any keys, you know, things like that. It's fully detailed in that respect.
And if I may add, the reason why I asked Joe, Jim and Scott, all three to be here is because, and they're not the only ones. You have all the other head custodians and the maintenance crew that are involved in these conversations. It's not one person making a decision. And I think the key thing here to keep in mind too, is that we have only gone into our own pockets for $3,000 above what was presented, which was the phalanges, which comes back to your question. But in terms of this whole project, and we're gonna be done this summer, to stay within that has been really credit to the team working together to identify where we are, where we need to go and what our next steps are.
So is it just these three gentlemen that do the sign-off or is there more?
Oh, no, they're, it's Scott Jacobs.
It's the whole team.
It's the whole team. It's the head custodian of the school looks at it, makes sure it's done. Scott Jacobs is the, is the one that comes to Penny and says, yep, this is good to go. And that's where the finalization comes. Scott's overseeing the entire project. But Scott's gotta lean on his head custodians and his maintenance people as well to ensure that things are getting done. And then Scott goes in and inspects too. So it's a team approach.
And we walk, like, I mean, we've always welcomed, if you'd like to have a tour, you know, we can do that for you as well. Our, I mean, we're open book. That's the part of this project, it's very transparent of, you, we're the facilitator, but, but the team here is, is, is built the project, you know, is, they're backed into that number. So if you'd like to witness, you know, if you'd like to witness a measure and verification, we're open to it. It's an open book. We're doing it all over the state. You know, you're welcome to say, hey, I want to learn more about that, send me a video, whatever. You know, go ahead.
Are you done, Salma?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
So just really quickly, had you guys gone in, and I'm, I'm don't, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse because it is done, but had you guys gone in and camered the pipes or the drains and seen the amount of scaling, would you have even attempted to put these low-flow valves on our toilets?
So right now in Charlevoy. Charlevoy said, when we were doing the project, they said, hey, we got a problem with our pipes. We have a problem with our pipes, so we're not sure. So we, of course, for the warranty of the equipment we're putting in, we had to make sure that the, you know, because they came to us with a problem. We, right? So we can't build in, or we could, we can build that in, but what if we don't find anything? Then we're wasting money at that point. So that's why we keep bringing it, we bring it to the table. We have districts like Ypsilanti that have, they have a water company that is taking care of their pipes, so their pipes aren't, aren't bad, so.
So personally, had you come, I, I just feel like, had you guys come and at least laid that option out? Because knowing the age of the, of the building, I'm just curious to know what it's cost us, besides the couple of things that I've seen and, and the elevator and, for having not seen what we were dealing with internally. Because, you know, I feel like it's, it's something that should have been presented to us that, hey, you might want to consider this. And if we chose not to as a district to do that, then I feel like then that would have been on us, but.
And that's, ideally, that's, that's the engineering part. That once we, once we come back and we say, you know, like, we've brought, you know, different things. Like, hey, if you, if you make this change in the equipment, you'll see this much savings. It's up to you whether you want to do it. I agree, yes. But sometimes, like, in different districts, we would put that into, we would build that into the, into the project and it would be, it would be wasteful.
A choice that we.
Right, but when we build it into the contract upfront, it's just like when you redo your kitchen. Like, I use that reference. When you, when you take the drywall off and you see the, the electrical and things like that, you know you're gonna find some things. And that was a piece of, you know, ideally, that was, we did find that and we brought it back. And I get what you're saying.
Knowing more about these, the low-flow and this energy-saving stuff and everything that's been going on lately and the fact that these were built more towards modern buildings and not older buildings.
Yeah, and I'm thankful we only had problems in that one portion of the, of the building, you know? And we were able to fix it upfront, you know? With the rest of the, the other buildings that are similar age, you know, we haven't had, thank God, you know, any other issues. But I agree, I understand where you're coming from and being a pipe, a pipe fitter's wife, I get where you're coming from on that.
Okay, at all, Mr. Sabal, I had a question and Ms. Kaminsky at 7:30.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around something. I almost feel like it's monopoly money when you're talking about ECMs. And I'll tell you why. Because everything I've ever learned, and by the way, which wasn't much about this, is everything's charged off of kilowatt-hours, right? Is that, it's KWH when you look at DTE bills, KWH, nothing's?
KWH, BTUs.
Correct.
Yes.
So ECMs are something that we're measuring this by, based off of start point and endpoint. But how does that relate to actual savings from a kilowatt-hour charge?
So if you were to take your lamp, your house, let's say, you changed them from fluorescent bulbs.
Correct.
And you put in LED light bulbs, which most people do these days, you should, you're, well, you will see a decrease in your energy bill. And even in, I have a district right now that all they're doing is a lighting upgrade. And they want to do an ESCO, they want to do a performance contracting. And they want to pay all the extra fees that goes along with that for measure and verification and state-level verification, things like that. Well, we know that when you change from fluorescent T12s, T8s, T5s, the old-school, to LED, we know that you're gonna see a savings. We can, I mean, you can do the calculation, there's all kinds of, on the web. So when we go through the building, we do counts. What are they and what are we changing to? Is it a T5? Is it a T12? Is it, you know, and we, we make, each, the, each individual light fixture is being calculated and multiplied by a multiplier that is industry standard.
What is that industry standard for ECM?
I know you're gonna ask me all these measures, this isn't even my.
Well, I'm curious.
Yeah, I know. I wish I would have brought.
It sounds like monopoly money to me. I'm just being honest with you. Cause if I can't see it in the bill, it's not real.
Yes. No, I, I'm sorry. My, my measure and verification energy guy is on vacation, unfortunately. But, so when we multiply, again, it's written out in the contract that Trune oversees. But, um, so, when we multiply, again, it's written out in the contract that Trune oversees, um, and it states right there, this is how many lights, this is the savings, this is the multiplier, and this is per contract. So, it's, it's fully stated by Trune. Frederick Heidman is your Trune Performance Contracting. He does all of my projects across the state. So, he verifies that. We also, and I don't know if I, I think I said this, but we also have to prove to the state. I know we have to, so we have to prove to you, but we also have to prove to the state as well to keep our ESCO status. Now, not everybody can do these projects. You have to have financial backing. So, Mom &amp; Pop Mechanical, or any, most, most of your mechanicals that you use in this area cannot do this type of project. They can do the work, they can't guarantee the work and get the energy bond to do the work. You have to be an ESCO company, and there's probably about 30 to 40, if you go on the NIESCO website, it's a national accreditation, you'll see who's qualified to do. So, your regular, um, WGA O'Neills, those types of mechanical companies, they can do the work, but they can't, they can't borrow the money and get a loan for you. We have to do that.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm, so essentially, I'm not going to see a $7,500 savings in my DTE bill based on ECMs and the dollars that you have there.
I can send you, like, that's one thing that, if you have notes, we can show you what... I actually have that in a, in a document form.
I'd be very interested to see where we were and where we are since...
We can't until next year, because of COVID last year.
No, even if it's month-to-month, just based on the electric that's been done. She said everything's been done on lighting.
So, the lighting has been done, um, but it's electric. It's not, I mean, you'll see a decrease, but it, you know, it just, yeah.
I'd be curious to see if it's close to 7,600.
No, absolutely. Like I said, I mean, I, I want to keep referring back to the fact that these are guaranteed projects, right? We have to prove to you and...
It's just for my knowledge. I'm sorry, I'm not questioning anything. I just, I just want to wrap my mind around it, so thank you.
And you know what, and if you'd like, and I'll just put this out there, if you'd like, when my M&amp;V person, my energy engineer comes back, as well as your utility, um, your utility account manager that calls on this district, um, they can also be part of another, another conversation, if you'd like, because we work directly with them.
Thank you.
Do we have a utility account manager?
Mm-hmm.
And, or is it through DTE, is everyone's, or consumers?
Consumers.
Okay. Ms. Kaminsky, go ahead.
Um, just one kind of quick question, Gwen. Um, most schools, when you go in, am I correct in assuming, have had some additional maintenance done since they were built, unlike ours? Is that correct? Or not really?
Not really.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, not really. Um, I mean, it just depends on the building. Some buildings are newer, you know, if I were, you know, working in Dearborn, you know how old those buildings are.
Yeah.
You know, so we have to, we have to build in a little bit more contingency there, knowing that, you know, those are 100-year-old buildings. So, it just all depends on district to district, what, I mean, you're all familiar with the title, you know, how do we get our money from the, from the state, you know? And so, some districts get way more money than other districts. So, those districts that have more money, sometimes, you know, are, are better off, typically, in their maintenance. It also comes down to, um, the facility help. You know, how many people do you have hired? We all know, 2008, the operations budget was cut for buildings, and that, that is just on a statewide, on a nationwide, because of, um, the downturn there. So, when times were good, and we had full, complete staffs, you had an electrician, you had a plumber, you had all this stuff, buildings were in much better shape. But we're so far removed from that now, that most districts that we go in are in this type of... That's why, that's why the state allows us to do these type of projects, because otherwise, you have no way, you know, sometimes to get heat. I have districts that their boiler goes down, and they have no way to pay for it than to do this project.
Right, I understand.
And if I could just make one last comment, based on what Gwen just mentioned?
Last comment, last comment.
Let's, let's just look at our district in the last 10 years. We have never had an electrician. We have never had a plumber. We have, you know, so we are working from behind the table.
And I appreciate your transparency.
No, absolutely. I, I am willing to come back at any time. I can give you a tutorial of how we measure. It's just not what I typically do. It's, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to misspeak.
Go ahead, Mr. Baydun.
So, like I said, I wasn't involved earlier, I wasn't around when this happened, but I just want everyone to know that we know what we have here. We know we have older buildings. We should have known the pipes were older than what anyone thought. Um, I just went through construction in my house. There's a lot of costs I didn't anticipate for that came up when I knocked down a wall, or again, changed bathrooms. So, I do want to clear that up a little bit, that everyone needs to understand. Our buildings are old, and they need to be upgraded, and they need to be taken care of. So, I just wanted to put that out there. We're not talking about a brand-new building. Um, you know, just wanted to clear the air there, on behalf of the district.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and I want to, you know, through this whole process, for some that were here, you know, as transparent as I can be, you know, is, is what we're, we're leaning for. And if you have a question, you're always open, I'm always open for you to give me a call, or, or write me an email, copy everybody, I don't care. You know, I'll get you the answer, um, until you're satisfied.
Right, I, actually, I would like that walkthrough that you're talking about, where you could show us what you did.
Do you want the walkthrough to measure and verify, or just to look?
Just to look and see, um, you know, maybe one of those...
We can set that up.
That would be nice for us, you know, after work, of course. So, we can see the difference and understand what the project entailed. Any other questions, Ms. Janoon? Okay, no. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.